America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're right. You caught me. I'll return next time.
Observe your position.
I did, didn't I? Look at that. Okay. Roll call please, Stacia.
Dell Householder?
Here.
Jason Gillespie?
Here.
Carl Doty?
Here.
Bill Minor?
Here.
All present, we have a quorum. Are there any conflicts of interest that the council notes on any of the items that will be up for discussion on the agenda tonight?
Negative.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Consent calendar. Approval of 7/27/2020 agenda, approval of 7/13/2020 meeting minutes. Approval of claims. Set hearing 352 Pine Mountain Avenue. See number 2020-06 conditional use permit to allow for nightly rental. Hill City Investments LLC. And lastly, set hearing 100 Main Street, the number 2020-02 variance request to allow for 20-foot rear yard setback for existing structure Peter Brothers LLC. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
Well, I don't believe it's required under Roberts rules since a quorum was maintained. I think the minutes from 7/13 should reflect your comments that Alderman Doty lost his cellphone signal and had to drop out of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Minor, Stacia, could you please ensure that that gets noted? Any other discussion? There being none, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Alderman Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gillespie. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please. Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yep.
Carl Doty?
Yep.
Bill Minor?
Yep.
Motion carries. Public comment. Members of the public may speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes per speaker.
Evening, Raleigh Noem, 166 Rainbow Ridge Court. I'm not particularly a big fan of or an advocate of billboards. Maybe that view is a little bit tainted by the things that are out along the interstate, but nonetheless, I also realize that there is a place for them. And when they're done right. And my point is that if there was a category for best billboard in the Black Hills, I would nominate the one that Hill City has south of town by the turnoff to go up to Mount Rushmore. It's extremely well done. It's easy to read, it's plain, it's well-placed, and it serves a very useful, good purpose. And so many times billboards can get overloaded and with too much information and you miss the message. But that is done very well. Its predecessor was equally well-done. But I like, I like the, I like the approach to that billboard. I don't know if that's the city, the chamber, economic development, all three combined, or what. But I just wanted to make a comment on that and compliment Hill City for extremely well-done, well-placed, and very useful, informative billboard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Noem. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead then and move on into action items. Before I start with the action items, I'd just like to do some housekeeping and advise the protocol that we will be using tonight. We have several appointments which I don't expect that will engage public discussion. However, those items that are on here, the way that we'll be handling those items is we will have someone explain what the item is or why they're there. So it's usually a city representative or city employee that will do that. We will then, after that, open it up to the public for comment. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. We will be timing them, and when you are done with your three minutes, we're going to ask you to sit down. After that, we will close it for public comment, and then we will open it up for discussion amongst the council members. We will not reopen or take additional comments from the public once it has been opened the first time while discussion is happening at the council level. So please be sure that you utilize that time if you do come up to address the council with any concerns or comments or anything that you feel the council needs to know and consider as they make their decisions. Okay, so let's move on into action item 7A, annual mayor appointment and oath for the city attorney. So the selection of city attorney, as everyone knows, our prior city attorney Frank Vetman had resigned and vacated the position in the interim. We had been fortunate enough to be able to get the help from Gunderson, Nelson, Palmer, and Ashmore to assist us. Our direct contact at that point was Talbert Wazorick. Through our interactions with the law firm and other assistance that they've been provided, I am prepared at this point to recommend and to appoint Gunderson, Nelson, Palmer, and Associates as our city attorney moving forward. Our contact with that firm would be Kaitlyn Cook. While we still would have the benefit of having contact with other attorneys in the firm, Kaitlyn would be our point of contact. There are a few items that Attorney Wazorick has already started for us, so we would hope that, or we would expect that he continue those items until they came to a close. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the council. If you, if you have any questions, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Motion to approve the appointment. Alderman Gillespie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doty. Any further discussion? Okay. Brett, I'm going to ask you to take roll call votes since Stacia stepped out for a second.
Gillespie?
Yep.
Doty?
Yes.
Minor?
No.
And Householder?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe Stacia stepped out just to pull me the oath, so if Attorneys Wazorick and Cook would come up here, please? It wasn't in the packet and I didn't remind her. Let me give her a few minutes. Brett, if you want to go ahead and flip the template, we'll ask Attorney Cook to sit with us.
Thank you, sir.
So while Stacia is doing that, just as a matter of introductions to our community, a lot of you may or may not have seen Attorney Wazorick. He's been kind enough to be able to help us out and attend meetings telephonically, which Attorney Cook has also agreed that she would do to save our city expenses. The firm of Gunderson, Nelson, Palmer, and Ashmore represent several other communities within the Black Hills. One of the main differences that we have with this firm versus one of our prior firms or firms that we've had in the past are, is the number of attorneys and the skillset and the knowledge base that this firm possesses. There's different areas and levels of expertise, and in fact, when we've called in for assistance through the South Dakota Municipal League, we've actually spoken with some of their other colleagues. So they are very much revered and they are utilized in a lot of situations. So we welcome you, and if you'd like to come over, I think I have one for both or one?
No, it's just one.
Just one, okay, so.
Just one. Good.
Okay, and I'm looking to see. Okay, so I don't think it matters.
No.
Okay, here it is.
I didn't know which one.
All right. You could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of South Dakota.
And the state of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city attorney for the city of Hill City.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city attorney for the city of Hill City.
Pennington County.
Pennington County.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Perfect. Thanks, Talbot. Okay. Go ahead and have a seat. Okay. Action item 7B, appointment of the city engineer. So after multiple opportunities to interact with our current city engineer and working with him on various projects and having various discussions, at this point, I am prepared to recommend that Cale Mcnebo is reappointed as our city engineer. Council, any discussion? No discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
You're to entertain a motion to approve, Cale?
Motion to approve. Alderman Householder, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doty. Any further discussion? Stacia, roll call vote please. Jason Gillespie?
Yep.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
No.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved, majority. Cale, would you please join me here? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of South Dakota.
And the state of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city engineer for the city of Hill City.
Of city engineer for the city of Hill City.
Pennington County.
Pennington County.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, Cale. Okay. All right. Before I move on to the appointment for Planning and Zoning Board, I do want to make comment to an appointment that's not on the agenda in case people are wondering or questioning. Last year, we did have the appointment of city administrator on our agenda as an action item. In reviewing our city codes and statutes, I refer to our City Ordinance Code 1.04.05, which refers to the city administrator, Section B. Appointment of city administrator. The city administrator shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent from majority vote from the Hill City Council for an indefinite term. As Mr. McMackin was appointed as city administrator previously, he is to support an indefinite term at this point. He will not be reappointed. He already holds that position. And I wanted to make sure that I addressed that for clarity in the event anyone has any questions. Okay, and I'll move on to the last appointment for the Planning and Zoning Board. So we have a vacancy that has occurred within the Planning and Zoning Commission due to Alderman Householder's move to city council president and new member of our council. And in creating that vacancy, Mr. Householder and myself worked to find an individual that would be able to take that job. We did have some interest that was presented to us by Mike Prozneski. We had a very pleasant conversation with him, and he shares a lot of ideals and a lot of community spirit and a lot of what Hill City really embodies and is anxious to help our city. So as such, I'm going to recommend the appointment of Mike, or people will finally know him as Scooter Prozneski, for City Planning and Zoning Commission. Any discussion, Alderman? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to appoint Scooter for Planning and Zoning Board.
Motion, Alderman Householder, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Alderman Doty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please. Carl Doty?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
Yes.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Motion carried. Scooter, welcome to the commission. If you just want to come up here, I've got your Bible here. So this is the guy, folks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, action item 7D, approval of charitable lottery Black Hills Quilt, Black Hills Quilt Guild, Vicki Barley.
So in your packet, you will see the charitable lottery form that we have people submit. The, they'll begin selling tickets for a quilt on September 12th and 13th, 12th and 13th of 2020, and to be drawn on June 6th of 2021. It will be at the quilt show where the drawing will be held, and like I said, they will be drawing off a quilt, so recommendation to approve.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Alderman, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Alderman Gillespie, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Doty. Any further discussions? Roll call vote please, Stacia. Bill Minor?
Yes.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yep.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Moving on to action item 7E, approval of Mattkins Court Asphalt Street Repair. Brett?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item has been discussed a couple of times before. In front of you, you should have a copy of the latest and greatest information that I have. Again, we talked about this repair for Mattkins Court a couple of times now, and there's been questions about exceeding the $50,000 threshold and what that means with implications with the state, and having to go out to a formal official bid, and then there was some questions about excise tax and whatnot. So I will start, I think the major question that came up at our last meeting was the $50,000 threshold. I did some outreach to Rod Fortin, who is the representative that we work with from Legislative Audit in Pierre, out of their revenue department.
Legislative Audit.
Yeah, Legislative Audit. So Rod, I just sent him an email because it's easier to track him down that way because he's always crisscrossing the state. But I asked him the question of essentially, hey, we're going to be getting into a project potentially that may have additional costs that we know that the preliminary costs are going to be probably 45, 46, 47,000, but there may be add-ons that will push us over the $50,000 limit. He said, well, good news for you, Brett. The legislature approved a change in that if it's considered a public improvement, which this would be because it's street repair, the new threshold for that type of work is now $100,000. That just triggered in July 1st of this year. So we're actually timed that just right. That's a reason why it was waiting to get on the agenda right now. So we don't have that $100,000 limit looking us and staring us in the face, so we won't be in violation of the public improvements according to Rod Fortin. So that is the good news. The second thing was the excise tax. I put that on the sheet here. The excise tax is listed by the state as a 2% tax. I know that the city is required to pay it. Again, I broke that out. You'll see in my Excel spreadsheet here that I provided that I listed as 2.041%. This is something that if you go to the Department of Revenue's website, they actually have a calculator on there for contractors to utilize. And for some reason that they refer contractors to use the calculator with that percentage, and the only explanation was this just ensures that you get the full dollar amount of excise tax related to the scope of your project. And so they are actually encouraging contractors to make it at 2.041%. I don't know if that's a rounding thing, but I just decided to reflect that from the state. The last question was if we're going to do some stabilization of the road, if we need to put some fabric to stabilize it. I did hear back, and Travis was helping me with this from J&amp;J, it's about $4 per square yard. And I know in Simon and that price quote that we received previously, it's $5 per square yard. So I put those dollar amounts in there. So for J&amp;J, it's like another $3,200 if the entire area needs to be done. And I think the other one was around $4,000. So those numbers are in there. Again, this is not exactly apples to apples, but we kind of tried to get it in the ballpark. I did not hear back from SiteWorks. I believe Brandon is, I just learned today, is on vacation. That's probably why I didn't hear back. So the last element was, at the last meeting, there was discussion about testing for SiteWorks, SWS column, of $1,500 that potentially could get removed because I don't think there was a desire or a need to get that tested. But there is some desire and need to get the rest of it done as far as the concrete, you know, curb and gutter removal. And so I think that $1,500 can come back out. That would go a long way to paying for the fabric to go back in. But either way, we don't have that $50,000 threshold anymore to worry about, so.
Okay.
I am available for any questions you might have.
Okay, so first I'd like to open it up. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Actually, I was also wondering about our fire hydrant up there because our fire hydrant does not, is not working more than even.
Okay, so you're on Betty Mattkins Avenue. This is, this is a different street.
Okay.
And we're going to talk about Betty Mattkins Avenue in our discussion. Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'm going to close public comment then and open it up for council discussion and consideration. So council.
Mayor?
Okay, so I've got two of you at the same time. Bill, go ahead. You have the floor.
What is City Administrator McMackin's recommendation?
You know, the price quote with SiteWorks and J&amp;J are pretty close to the same. I guess I'm leaning more towards SiteWorks to do the work just because they're already on site doing the Bull Run subdivision, and they have all of the resources and whatnot that's going to be needed to work on this. I think they'd be able to respond better if we want to take out a little bit more curb and gutter if we need to. They'll be a little bit more flexible, I think, with the project in case we come across something that needs to be addressed specifically that we can't identify until we open the road up. So that would be my recommendation.
So you would recommend SiteWorks. So Alderman Minor? Brett said he would recommend SiteWorks.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay, Alderman Householder, you have the floor.
I'd like to ask our city engineer about this testing. What, what would you recommend in this situation? Is that something you think we would need or?
Yeah, traditionally, I'm sorry about that. Traditionally, you get concrete tested. You know, that's something that's, that's not visually, you know, you need some sort of a test result so that you can prove that you've reached that 4,000 PSLI compressive strength in 28 days. As far as the subgrade goes, though, I wouldn't worry about the testing on the subgrade. Really what we're going to do is load a blade or a truck, and I would traditionally walk along and I'd look for soft, unstable subgrade right off of the proof rolling. So we do what we call a proof roll. So we do a proof roll, then we proof roll the gravel, and if there's any soft spots, I'll paint them out and say you've got to fix it before we go any further. They'll fix it to our satisfaction. That's our pre-pave, and then put the asphalt down. But I wouldn't, on such a small project, get too excited about the testing except for the concrete. Concrete really doesn't need to be tested. There's no way visually to look at a pile of concrete and know if the entrained air is within tolerance levels.
And while you're here, I don't mean to cut you off.
That's good.
Alderman Householder. However, there was some discussion that we had at our last meeting relative to some of the alligatoring and the spider webbing that's happening on the other side, and could you just give us your thoughts on that and correction measures for that?
Yeah, for sure. And that's in my conversation with Brett, that's why I recommended that we go with an option that includes fabric, either that's geogrid or a fabric. What you see out there on the road are, is alligator cracking, and it's always, they break into tiny little cubits. When you have alligator cracking, that is subgrade failure. It's not asphalt and it's not the aggregate. It's a, you have too much water in the subgrade soils. So there's no point in doing milling and overlay on a street of that condition. It needs to have the soils underneath stabilized, dried out. And then you get a fabric under there which has tensile strength when you, if you get a long enough roll, as soon as it starts depressing it, mobilize the tensile strength of all the fabric around it. What you'll see is a lot better product coming out of the fabric of the grid.
All right, council, any additional questions for Mr. Mcnebo?
Was, I know we, we talked about, last meeting was brought up about like the water sewer line, stuff like that, all the infrastructure underneath the road. Do we have any updates, or do you know anything as far as the quality of the infrastructure under the road currently?
Boy, I hadn't looked into the sewer water infrastructure issue.
We, we just had the sewer line scoped a few weeks ago, and I don't know if Travis said we got that video back yet.
I haven't seen the video back, and they didn't give me any indication that there was a problem on that street. They told me of other issues they were concerned about, but nothing on that street.
Yeah, so the sewer line, it was just camera, but I don't know of anything that stood out within that scoping to determine that there was a problem. The water line, we had, the reason why we have to kind of put the street back together is about two years ago, a little over two years. We had a water leak at the cul-de-sac of that street, and we actually had to take out all the asphalt to repair the pipe. It is, it's PVC pipe. It was in good shape. It just, the reason it busted was there was back pressure feed on the, on the lines, and it just couldn't hold the pressure on it. And so there's nothing fundamentally wrong with that pipe that's in there right now, so I wouldn't have any concerns about it. There's no storm sewer in that, in that area, so everything surface flows out to Shoot Rooster Drive. So that's all the infrastructure right now. So I wouldn't see any reason not to just put the new asphalt street over the top of it. I think the biggest issue is, what Cale said, is that subgrade failure. But then there's other utility, it looks like to me sewer line or water line taps that have occurred in the past that weren't backfilled and compacted properly. So there's a few little spots that are like this, and this would take care of that and stabilize it.
Okay. Thank you, Cale.
Mayor?
Alderman Minor?
Would, would the city, City Administrator McMackin recommend, since we have a new $100,000 limit, that we go ahead with the repairs by crawls on Shoot Rooster and on Newton by Tracy Park at this same time?
I purposely separated out these projects from one another. Not saying that we can't revisit it at a later date, and I, you know, the, the agenda item listed on the, on the agenda here really doesn't talk about those other areas, so I wouldn't feel comfortable kind of adding those on right now.
Would it be possible, then, for us to look to a, an action item which would allow us discussion on those other areas?
Yeah, so I can bring it back as its own action item and proceed that way. I really just didn't want to co-bingle these projects together.
Okay.
It's better to keep them separate.
So still considering doing it with the same time and same resources, but just handling it separately? So either way, we'd be within our $100,000 threshold?
Correct.
Okay. So Alderman Minor?
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay. Okay. Any other council discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the South SWS bid for 49,70417.
I have a, Alderman Householder, Alderman Minor, were you going to say something? Okay.
Wasn't, wasn't there discussion about adding fabric and removing testing so that quote isn't exactly perfect? Shouldn't the motion be at a cost not to exceed, you know, 52,000 or something so that we don't run into trouble there?
So Alderman Householder, would you like to amend your motion?
I would not be comfortable putting a floor on it, or a ceiling, I mean, on it.
A ceiling on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I could strike the 49,704 and just move to approve that company doing the work.
Okay.
But we don't know what the substructure, I mean, it might be 1,000, it might be 2,000, we don't know.
So Alderman Householder has made a move to strike his first statement and go with he would move to approve work done by SWS.
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doty. Any further discussion, council?
Not to be too nippy, but we're approving a quote, right?
Right, right.
So we got to accept SiteWorks and accept the quote, and whether it comes back with more, then we do that.
with more than we do that at a later time, or let them do the work.
I think that's.
Educate me on.
Yeah.
That's the way to do that, yeah.
Well, I think that's what Alderman Minor was attempting to get at, of giving kind of some cushion in there for us, as staff to work with. You know, I guess the question remains if you, if the number is 52,000 that gets approved, and then some, for some reason, we go above and beyond that. You know, it, it's kind of a, a deal where they're out on the field and we kind of need to do it, like, right away. And it's, so, you know, we could go through the emergency approval process that we have in contacting the mayor and the president of the council and getting authorization that way to go above and beyond a set number. We could set it up that way. Or you could just set it all the amount higher.
Okay. Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
I, I don't know that 52 is the right number. I'm not comfortable with just blanket approval of $99,999, keeping under the $100,000 limit.
Yep.
I, I would be comfortable maybe saying not to exceed 60,000 without, you know, give 10,000 cushion for unexpected or something.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? So, since we have a motion and a second, we have to vote on this one, and then, or can they amend it before we do the vote on it? I think since we have a motion and a second, we actually have to vote on that, and then if it fails, have another motion presented.
Oh, you can get the, you can get the change from the.
So, the change can happen now?
Yeah. You can amend or substitute the motion.
So, even though we have a motion and a second, is there any interest, Alderman Householder and Alderman Doty, in making any changes to that motion?
I'll amend the motion to cap at 55,000.
Okay. And if it exceeds 55, to utilize the emergency approval. Okay. So, the motion has been amended to reflect that it would be the, up to 55,000, and if for some reason that is exceeded, then we would utilize the emergency protocol in order to gain additional authorization. Is there a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Alderman Doty, second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yep.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. All right. Action Item 7F, First Reading of Ordinance 2019-03, and Ordinance Amending Chapter 2 Definitions and Chapter 10 Sign Regulations Within Title IX Zoning and Subdivision Regulations. For the explanation on this, we have. Somebody. Danny Shade that's going to give us the information.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Danny.
This is an ordinance revision of Hill City Municipal Code Chapter 10 Sign Regulations. In 2014, the Title IX P&amp;Z Commission decided to leave the sign regulations as it appears in the template, knowing it will be revisited and revised in the future when the group sent it to City Council for adoption in 2014. In 2018, a councilman disagrees with the signed ordinance code interpretation and demands a review of the ordinance. The signed ordinance amendment is the result of 24 planning and zoning meetings from January 23rd of 2019 to July 20th of 2020. All publicized, but seven were highly publicized, inviting the public, businesses, residents to attend. Advertising of the proposed ordinance changes were placed in the Prevailor Chamber newsletters, direct business email blasts, and then via regular mail to all commercial property owners and business owners within the city limits. The revised ordinance was delivered to City Council on February 10th of 2020 for the first reading. Council voted to table the amendment. Planning and zoning held a publicized daytime meeting and an evening meeting, advertised it for four days in the Rapid City Journal and the Prevailor. A hard copy of the proposed changes went to all commercial property owners within the city limits. Planning and zoning discussed the signed ordinance amendment again in two separate meetings in June and July. Added A-frame sandwich board signs as loud signs without a permit. Some businesses have daily specials in the space on private property to use these, and they're traditionally brought in or brought out in the morning, brought in at night. The message changes frequently. A definition of these signs was agreed upon, and they were added to the section exempt signage. Feather flags were also re-discussed. Feather flags without advertising copy had already been added to the exempt signage list, and it was determined by the commission to allow up to three feather flags with advertising copy per business owner, provided they could be spaced out 20 feet apart in lieu of a temporary banner sign. This was added to the signed ordinance amendment. So, I'd like to walk the council through the proposed changes that are on the screen. Under Section 1002, well, what you see in the, on the left-hand column is our current code. The proposed changes are in red in the right-hand column. So, under Section 1002, definitions were added for air puppets, digital sign, feather flag, electronic sign, hanging sign, and A-frame sandwich boards. The abandoned sign was defined a little bit more clearer than what we currently have. We added meaning, a sign or sign structure that is blank, obliterated, or displays obsolete advertising material for a period in excess of 12 consecutive months. Animated sign was quite a lengthy definition. We shortened it to a sign or display that uses movement or the appearance of movement through the use of patterns of lights, changes in color or light intensity, computerized special effects, video displays, or through any other method, except for the scrolling of a static message or scene onto or off a sign board in one direction per message. So, what the commission is trying to say, reader boards are something the city and the people want. And so, this exempts reader boards from that animated sign definition. Average, or the definition for billboard was changed to see off premise sign. Electronic reader board was given a better definition. A sign which contains a traveling message or a message that appears to be traveling, usually in a horizontal manner. The characteristics incorporated into any message remains constant, does not change in hue or intensity, or appear to change in hue or intensity as they appear to travel across or through the automatic changing copy area. Also referred to as an electronic message sign or center. An off-premise sign was given a full definition. A permanent sign erected, maintained, or used in the outdoor environment for the purpose of the display of commercial or non-commercial messages not pertinent to the use of, products sold on, or the sale or lease of the property on which it is displayed. Outdoor advertising sign, that definition was eliminated. Projecting sign, our previous attorney had determined that pretty much projecting sign and hanging sign are the same thing. So, he wanted that reflected in the code. So, wherever it says projecting, you're going to have also slash hangs. We added a separability clause, which we did not have in the previous, or in our current code. So, that is, if one or more sections of the sign code are found to be invalid, the remaining sections stand on their own and are still valid. Under the figures or the examples in our sign ordinance, general sign types, we added a graphic of a hanging sign. Section 1004.7, maintenance, repair, and removal. Lot of questions on this one, and there was a lot of clarification that the commission wanted to deliver in this, in this section, this paragraph here. So, they added in regards to, in regards to signs that have deteriorated, so, or when any signs ad copy has deteriorated by 50% as determined by the code official and affirmed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, or is in a non-working condition. The owner thereof, or the person or firm using same shell upon written notice by the code official forthwith in the case of immediate danger, and in any case within not more than 10 days, 45 days in the case of deteriorated ad copy, make such sign conform to the provisions of this ordinance or shall remove it. If within 10 days, 45 days in the case of deteriorated ad copy, the order is not complied with, the code official should be permitted to remove or cause such sign to be removed at the expense of the owner and/or the user of the sign. We have a lot of signs in town where you can't really read the message anymore, or it's, it's dilapidated. The commission felt that we needed a little bit more teeth in there to determine what is dilapidated, what is deteriorated, and then have the ability to be able to have that, the owner of that sign bring it up to code where it's actually being utilized to advertise something or remove it. Non-conforming signs, the only thing that was added to that paragraph was the word grandfathering. So, that, that was in there. Anything that's legally existing at the time of the passage of this ordinance that does not conform in use, location, height, or size, shall be considered illegal, non-conforming use or structure, and shall be permitted to continue in such status until such time as it's either abandoned or removed by its owner. We added also called grandfathering. Exempt signs. Added to the exempt sign list were feather flags with no wording, pictures, or advertising copy of any kind, grand opening, and business anniversary signs for a period not to exceed 14 days, and then A-frame sandwich boards, not to exceed 12, 12 square feet per side, nor exceed four feet in height, nor exceed three feet in width. The signs must be brought inside the business during non-business hours, one per street frontage allowed, and cannot be placed in the public right of way. There were three signs that were added to the prohibited signs. Air puppets, signs that exhibit statements, words, or pictures of obscene or pornographic subjects as determined by the code official, and animated and digital signs. Under 1007.1, permits required. We had a couple situations where people would get a permit for a sign, and a year or two goes by, and the sign is not up, and then they want to put the sign up, and everybody's like, well, did they get a permit or not? So, they added erection of sign must be completed within one year from permit approval, or a new permit will be required. Under 1008.2.3, special promotion, event signs, we added and/or to that. And the reason is because sometimes it's an event, sometimes it's a promotion, it's not both generally at the same time. Let's see. Signs temporarily displayed to advertise special promotions and/or events shall be permitted for non-residential uses and for all commercial and industrial districts subject to the following limitations. Such signs shall be subject to the limitations set forth in Tables 1010.1 to 1010.6. Annual temporary sign permit is required. Permit year should begin January 1st and end December 31st. No prorating or permit fee will occur, and temporary signs may not be displayed during times when the business is closed for the season. This was in response to several businesses that are trying to stay open year-round or are open year-round, who wanted that more than that 60 days of our current code allows for temporary signage. And the commission agreed. It's a good thing for our businesses who are trying to stay open for that shoulder season. And we had a lot of discussion, the commission had a lot of discussion on the proposed fee for that, which will be brought to you guys in a separate resolution. But they agreed that $10 a month was very fair. Right now, if we opened up that dollar per day, it would be $365. Commission agreed to 0120 feet. On on-premise, Figure 1008.1.2.1, on-premise freestanding signs, commercial and industrial zones, vehicular speed, subject to posted limits under 35 miles per hour. We also unofficially, without it being in the code, use that chart for off-premise signs as well. We've eliminated using that for off-premise signs. Projecting hanging signs, I think we talked about that, wherever projecting is, you're also going to see the word hanging, and that was added, that, a couple of words were added to that 1008.3.3. And then we added some guidance in regards to feather flags with advertising copy. Feather flags with advertising copy are limited to three per business, with the sum of the square footage of all feather flags not to exceed size allowed for temporary signage within that sign district, and must be placed a minimum of 20 feet apart. Off-premise freestanding signs, we currently allow them, or they cannot be placed within 300 linear feet, street distance of any other off-premise sign. The commission expanded that to 500 feet, linear street distance of any other off-premise sign. We had, during the planning and zoning meeting, we had the map up of where all the billboards were, the, well, I should say where all the off-premise signs were. And the commission had me measure as we were going along, and they realized, wow, 300 feet is not really that far away. So, they felt very comfortable in widening it. Some of the commission wanted 1,000. They agreed on the 500. Temporary signs, currently, they're allowed at 32 square feet. The commission wanted to upgrade that to 36 square feet. And then the sign transition area, because we realized that the area from McGregor, Walnut Avenue from McGregor to East Main is slowly becoming all commercial. We do have two residents that still live there, but traditionally, it's, it's going to be expanded to a commercial zone 10, 20 years down the road. They thought, the commission thought it would best to expand that transition district to that area, so that you have your commercial district where pretty much you can have your off-premise signs, you can have all that stuff. And then going right from there to central business district, where you're really limited in terms of what signage you can put up, that's what the transition district does. It takes you from that very populated sign area, and then you're coming into a little less sign area to your central business district. So, that's what a transition district is all about, and we currently have it, except for this addition from Walnut Avenue from McGregor to East Main.
Okay. Does the council have any questions? I'm going to open it up to public comment first. So, thank you. So, I'm going to head, go ahead now and open it up to public comment. Anything that you'd like to make sure that you inform the council of and make them aware of, which will assist in making their decisions. Please come up to the podium, state your name, and understand that we're asking that you keep it to a three-minute maximum. Any comments? Okay. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to go ahead now and close public comment. Council, I'm going to open it up for you to, for discussion. Please feel free to directly ask questions to Miss Shade in the event you need additional information and clarification.
Mayor.
Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
I believe, Miss Shade talked about things that weren't included in the council packet for the ordinance revision.
Okay.
I was trying to follow the one that she read.
Okay.
So, I'm slightly confused. I see nothing in the council packet that says 500 feet spacing on billboards.
It's in the chart that I sent you later on this afternoon.
So, for clarification, there wasn't, there was additional information that included the chart, in which that information is captured, that was forwarded to the council this afternoon. Does that help, Bill?
No, because I'm looking through my emails, and I don't see it.
Okay. Alderman Minor, while the council continues to discuss this, Stacia will go ahead and send it to you right now. Any of the additional, Alderman, did you all receive it? I saw one shaking, it looks like.
Looking right now, I'm not sure what I did, but.
Okay.
There's a few packets. I mean, it's right here.
That's great.
So, I received it.
Okay.
And I grabbed it off of your cell.
So. So, I have.
Go ahead.
Mayor.
Yep. You have the floor still.
Is there a city attorney still there?
Yes, they are.
So, I have a question. The proposed sign ordinance revision toggles back and forth between must and shall. And I believe that shall has been determined to mean may, where must is mandatory. So, with these revisions, are we just creating more confusion when we use the words interchangeably?
No. My understanding is that shall means shall, and that must is essentially a synonym of it. of it. I mean, in general, I don't know that, I'd have to go through and look at every usage of that in the proposed amendments to see if I think that there's any need to change it to be consistent throughout. But no, typically, when you're interpreting an ordinance or statute, shall means that you shall do something. If it's meant to say may, it's may. So like I said, without going through and looking at every single reference, I'm not, I guess, overly concerned. If you see a specific area that you have concerns about, I'm happy to look at it for you. But that's not typically a concern that I have in drafting ordinances or interpreting statutes or ordinances.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion, council?
There's a couple things that I think probably need changed, and maybe you got them already, like the ordinance, 2019 Day Street, probably going to change, right? Versus the copy, shouldn't it be 2020 since we're doing it this year?
We started it in 2019. The finance officer didn't feel that it needed to be changed to a new number. We can roll with the old one.
I can trust her for that, and a lot of other things, even.
I'd get a look at our attorney, though, for.
For clarity's sake, I think typically, in my other cities, when we do ordinances, we do it when they're passed, because you have a lot of instances where people pick things up, and then they put it down again, and you don't really know if it was ever actually passed. So typically, we would see it be based on the date or in the year of passage.
That's what we see typically. If there's agreement, we probably should have it updated to the year in which it was passed. Okay? So that is an update.
You did mention that projecting would have a slash hanging on all of them. And in the copy we had in our packet, there is one that's kind of missing in there.
Which one?
It's actually under the definitions, under Section 202. It just says projecting sign, there's no slash hanging sign on it. These are kind of minor typo things, but.
Oh, yeah.
To make it consistent.
Where it says hanging sign, see Section 1002 dot 1, projecting sign?
Yep.
Should say slash hanging. Okay.
Then kind of a question, why the reference to South Dakota law being removed from the abandoned sign? Was there a reason for that, or it just was taken out? Because I know the old folks references the statute as well as.
There actually was discussion on that. They didn't feel that the South Dakota codified law was clear enough.
Does it offer us more guidance in this?
Less guidance.
That it should be, stay in there, or it could stay in there?
It could stay in there, but it was, it offered, if I remember correctly, it offered less guidance than what the commission recommended put in there.
Is that same statute that's, I don't know, loosely referenced in the current ordinance? Or does that outline processes at all? If it is an abandoned sign or anything like that? I didn't get a chance to look that one up.
I'd have to check that, Jason. I don't have that specific codified law in front of me.
So Alderman Gillespie?
Yeah?
You're correct, there's two sections in state law for the Department of Transportation that reference abandoned signs and how you determine if a sign is abandoned. And that was the issue that we had come before the council earlier. And city policy has been to wait 12 months and then send a notice saying you have an abandoned sign, please remove it. Whereas under the DOT rules, the South Dakota codified law, once they become aware of a sign, then they send a notice to the owner saying you have 12 months to bring it into compliance. So I would prefer that approach, where you give the owner a chance to bring it into compliance, than ordering them to remove it afterwards.
So it has a little bit of due process in your interpretation, Bill, by leaving that STCL reference in it?
Yes. I believe it gives the owner a chance to get it corrected versus making them remove
Do you guys have any discussion on that in P and Z when you went through it? As far as the due process and stuff to use or not, use or lose?
Yeah, my recollection was that time is of the essence. In other words, if we're going to wait a year, that sign's been abandoned for a year, it's time to do action. I mean, come on, we don't, you know, you don't want to maybe go three or four or five months, and oh, it is abandoned, I guess, announce that, and give them another 12 months. We're trying to kind of, if it isn't working, it shouldn't be there.
So right now, if there's a, or even under this scenario, if there's a sign that's considered abandoned, and then it is, you give a notice and tell them to take it down? Because they haven't used it for 12, or do you give them, say, hey, this hasn't been used for a year, you got 30 days?
I've given two months.
To take it down, or?
No, to put some advertising up on it.
Okay, to use it.
Or in the case of where there was, there was advertising something that was no longer in Hill City, to wipe it clean.
Okay. So they get two months right now to use it or lose it? It's not just we sit back and.
Or over it, so it's a white space, or some kind of just blank space, in anticipation that they can rent it to somebody else that might need the advertising.
Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
My reading of this, and this is, it's kind of two separate issues, when you look at the actual amendment that is being contemplated versus the actual process and procedure here. So where I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, I apologize, Mr. Minor, if I'm not seeing it in the same place, but where I'm looking at the removal of South Dakota state law is in the actual definition of an abandoned sign, and not necessarily within the processes and procedures for identifying and going through that whole.
The due process.
Yep, the due process aspect of it.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, so that's, I view them as two separate issues with regard to removing the South Dakota state law versus keeping it in. So from a legal standpoint, removing that wouldn't change the way that I would analyze how you would go about providing the due process and providing the process and procedure. I view them to be separate.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
The question became earlier this year about a sign which hadn't operated, a digital reader board type sign. And so nowhere in our code does it say it has to operate one day a week, you know, five minutes a day, any type of requirement. And so what the city was doing was saying, we can't find any evidence that this has operated this past year, therefore you have to remove it. And so our code isn't specific about that type of requirement, and led to some confusion,
Thank you, Alderman Minor.
It still could be a separate deal, anyway, versus what we're looking at.
And that's electronic, too.
So is an abandoned sign, the Little Nashville that's painted on the side of the Harley Little Nashville hasn't operated for 30-plus years?
That's historic, Bill.
Yeah.
So let me ask real quick, Bill, did you receive the email from Stacia?
No subject, yes.
Okay, so you did receive the email. Now I've got Danny that needs the floor, you have the floor.
In regards to the electronic sign that hasn't been working the almost three years I've been here, and quite a length of time that our city administrator has been there, I would think, in that situation, it was common sense. When I'm there, and the business is operating, and the sign is not running, I'm leaving at 5:30, 6:30, 7:00 after a meeting, and it's not running. I come in, in the morning, it's not running. It was a common sense conclusion on my part that the sign was not working, and then it was verified by the owner of the sign that, yes, it has not been on.
So.
And you gave a 60-day notice that says, hey, use or lose it?
A lot more than that, a lot more than that.
Okay.
My objective in any kind of code enforcement is to bring the person to compliance. That's the easiest thing to do, is here's the steps to bring yourself into compliance with the code. To me, that's the path of least resistance. To have to do enforcement is something I don't like to do.
Okay, so I'd also like to remind the council that we grow from experiences we have in discussions of things that we have had, and we try to use that to help us build further decisions going forward. Right now, this is our first reading, as I understand it, of this ordinance. So we will have the opportunity to see this again for a second reading, based on what the decision is tonight, also incorporate those changes that the council thinks, so.
Last thing I had is, other than you guys picking on the muppets with the air puppet thing, was what about the animated and digital signs? Why are those prohibited?
Well, they're already prohibited in central business district. So from the consensus we got out of, what, 28 meetings in the public that.
Two years.
Yeah, two years of work, the citizens, the overwhelming majority did not want those in Hill City. And that is taking away from the unique, uniqueness of Hill City by having what everybody else, we don't want to turn into a ransom. You know, we want to stay uniquely Hill City, and that would be a, that's a distraction, those types of signs.
There's a distinct difference between the crawl sign and an animated and/or digital sign, and everything like that.
Those are reader boards. They're giving the reader some information, they're not, you know.
And the fees are a different deal, and we can talk about that later and then.
Okay.
That's a separate resolution.
Okay, so Alderman Gillespie was just finishing. You're done, Alderman Gillespie. Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
I believe we had someone speak at a public hearing that, while they currently had a digital sign, reader boards on, it was old and would most likely not be repairable should it fail. And so technology has moved away from reader boards. So that was one comment I heard. And then the other comment, and I don't know that I can bring it up, would be the email that Danny sent out on September 5th, 2019. If she can remember that email, can I talk about that in open session?
Yeah, I mean, are you uncomfortable about any emails that you send not being?
Probably not.
I mean.
Did it pertain to, this is Katie Cook talking, did it pertain to a personnel matter, potential litigation, anything that would typically be addressed in executive session?
The implication of litigation.
Then I would recommend in general that that would be something that would be addressed in executive session?
I don't think it had anything to do with the city.
I have a copy of it here, if somebody wants to look at it.
Perhaps let Attorney Cook look at it, and Danny look at it together, thank you. Okay, so while they're reviewing that email, Bill, we will get back to you on that. Anything, any other, any other conversation on this?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just.
We've got Alderman Householder that has the floor.
Planning and zoning did not take this subject lightly. They spent a considerable amount of time and discussion, pros and cons, I mean, it was a back and forth, and we came to a consensus, although I was not at the planning and zoning when the vote was taken to move it to council. But over the two-year period, you know, we had a lot of public meetings where all the council, where all of the citizens were invited to come and express their opinions. Didn't see any council members there, with the exception of the mayor. Bill, you did attend a few of them, I will say that. But the time, we gave plenty of time for people to discuss things, come up with objections, and we heard those, we listened, and I think we came up with what we felt, as five members of this community, to be a fair or equitable ordinance for all members of Hill City. Sure, some people are not going to like it, some are really going to be in love with it, but overall, that, the five members of this committee really felt this was fair for the citizens.
Okay. Okay, and I've seen Danny has returned to her seat, so do we have a decision on the feasibility of discussing that email in this forum?
If it's specifically this email, I don't know that I have any objection to it, because the way I read it, it's more of an informational email from Danny about a conversation. So I suppose, Mr. Minor, if you want to talk about it, to my knowledge, there's no pending litigation surrounding this, but I, if you'd like to bring it up and ask Ms. Shade questions, you certainly can.
How about I do it this way? Rapid City was in a 10-plus-year legal battle with two national advertising companies over regulating billboards. If that's not something you're up for and handled, is that something you could speak to?
So generally, billboards are a hot topic for every city that I have represented or been involved with. It's, has First Amendment considerations as to what a city can and cannot regulate. My reading of the email is that there was a concern about an outright ban on billboards in Hill City. That seems to be different than what at least I see in this, you know, the proposed revisions to this ordinance. It's always a consideration, and yes, they tend to be a litigious group that want to protect their interests, but I can tell you that cities that I have worked with have significantly more restrictive billboard ordinances than what's at issue here as well. So I guess, generally speaking, yes, it is something the city could potentially be involved in litigation for at some point, but without, you know, more detail as to the type of sign or more facts, it's difficult for me to, I guess, project into the future as to whether or not this is something that the city could be sued for. And of course, being sued for something is completely different than having a successful lawsuit for something. So I don't know that, that's kind of a non-answer, I think, but that's the best that I can do, given what I know.
Okay. Bill, does that?
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Anything else before we look to any type of motion? Okay.
Mayor?
Alderman Minor?
So there's an animated billboard by the bank that advertises for Holiday Inn Express, and so that's an objectionable sign.
Isn't that a reader board?
Is that what I'm hearing?
Would be grandfathered.
No, it.
Oh, okay.
It shows a picture of black with eggs and bacon.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Shade to go ahead and answer that question for us.
Most of it had variants to be put up there, if they've been banned.
It would be grandfathered in, central business district. Bill?
So the answer is it would be grandfathered in?
But you're saying now that that's an objectionable sign, we couldn't have something like that in the future?
Do the eggs, bacon, and toast drop into the screen?
I didn't say flash on.
Because I would need to review that sign to see if it would be more reader board style, reader board definition, even though it is a figure versus a word, because you can put figures.
Advertising service or product.
On to reader boards. So depending on how it drops in, or comes onto the screen, if it comes from the top down, or the side, to me, that's a reader board, for our definition, or the proposed definition.
Okay.
Mayor, do we ask Bill to do something about the background voice?
Well, we've got another caller that's joined us, it could be them. So do we have another caller on the phone that's joined us? Nope, they just dropped. So apparently that was the noise.
They don't win the prize, do they?
Okay. Anything?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Alderman Minor, you still have the floor.
Yes, Alderman Jarvis and myself reached out to them Chairman Householder and Vice Chairman Walker on the, on the sign ordinance before it came to council, the first time. And so, yes, I've spent a considerable amount of time and several meetings and emails on this subject. I, there's parts of this that I don't have an issue with. There, there are parts of it that I do have issues with. The Stucco Highway Act, Beautification Act, has been trying to regulate billboards since 1965. And, we don't have less billboards, even though they've had literally hundreds of laws written. We now have, instead of billboards on one side of the road, now we have double-sided billboards. At one point, they said, we're going to move the billboard 600 feet off the highway, so now we have billboards way out in the field. We had the old semi-trailers dug along the road and a billboard painted on the side of them. We now have fire trucks, not to pick on a certain business, but fire trucks pulled in the right-of-way to advertise businesses. So, I think we're fooling ourselves when we think we can put enough things in our ordinance to have some idealistic view of signs in Hill City. The thing that bothered me were quotes taken out of context in the comprehensive plan. If you read the comp, the plan, it, they quoted visual effects and aesthetics, visual aesthetics. And when you read what that refers to, it was people didn't want industrial factory zoning in Hill City because of smokestacks and stockpiles and materials. It had nothing to do with signs whatsoever. So, I'm disappointed that one question over what's a hanging sign and a projecting sign has turned into this mammoth rewrite. I think that banning animated signs is not going to be sustainable in the future. It's like saying that City Hall will only accept calls from a rotary dial phone. We're, we're fooling ourselves if we don't think that the technology is going to be there, or that somebody's going to pull an old truck up and have a sign in the back of it or paint it. You see them along the highways now. So, trying to over-regulate something is just going to cause problems, in my opinion, so. I, and even though you didn't bring the fee structure before us, I'm 100% opposed to the $120 fee. I got the data from last year, January through November. Eight out of 10 businesses that got temporary sign permits were for 30 days or less, $30 or less, and now you're telling them it's going to cost $120? I understand that if you think $10 a month is a reasonable fee, but it's still $120. So, I, at this time, I have no aspiration, I guess, or desire to send us back to planning and zoning for, for further rewrite. That didn't, that didn't happen, they essentially sent the same thing right back to council. So, I can't support what you've done. So, I don't know how the other Aldermen feel, but if we want to do something, we're going to have to sit here and rewrite these sections ourselves, or vote it down, one of the two. So, that's my feelings on this.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Minor. Anything else?
Mayor, I'll call the question.
Absolutely.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented to council.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to...
With one exception, is changing the ordinance date reflect today's date?
Okay, with the change to reflect today's date in the ordinance numbering and identification of the ordinance, Alderman Householder has put a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance as written with the change as noted. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
There's a second, Alderman Doty. Any additional conversation before roll call vote?
Just make sure the projecting, hanging stuff...
Projecting, hanging.
Grammaral errors aren't corrected.
And grammatical errors, okay.
I got my questions answered.
So noted, okay. All right, no further conversation, roll call vote, please, station.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
No.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one. We will expect to hear a second reading at the next council meeting. All right, that will conclude our action items. Now to start our discussion items. Our first discussion item is library director report.
Hi, I'm Jamie Alexander, the Director of the Hill City Government Library. I'm reporting on first and second quarter this time. You all saw that in your packet?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any questions? Second quarter's kind of scary, huh?
I think the library did excellent job of how they handled this COVID-19 by your curbside service. You kept the library's services available to the public. I commend you and your staff for that.
We did our best, and we did get a lot of thank yous for that. So, we, you can see on the second quarter circulation by numbers, in 2019, we had 3,232. When we were doing curbside, we had 2,000, excuse me, 3,232. Curbside, we still did 2,198. So we, we put some miles on our shoes, but it was good.
So I would like to echo the sentiments from President, Council, Householder. I was overwhelmed with the work that the library board and the library staff did in order to maintain some sense of normalcy during this difficult time. The library not only affects the children of our community, but it is also a staple for our older residents and also our younger residents that don't have access to things like internet and things like that. So, your ability to be able to come up with creative ways that allowed you to continue to service the community is commendable, and I'd ask that you please pass that along to staff of the board.
I will do that.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions? No? Okay.
We do have some things coming up, the 50th anniversary for the library is in November. So, we're going to have a party.
Yay, of course.
And we have other things, we're going to try to plan as things go on, as school starts, hopefully get the kids to come back, get involved with the library. Michael has one quick announcement.
Quick.
You've been told.
Tammy wants to get home. First, I'd like to thank those of you that helped us obtain a second full-time employee. She's 32 hours, very qualified, Shelley Ann Bauer. She has a BS in education from Northern State, she's taught. She ended up in Wappington, North Dakota as a library assistant for the school system. They decided to come to God's country, and she did a little bit of substitute teaching for our school here, and we snagged her. The library business is a screwy business. Any of you that would get in to our books and our, our software system and all that, you'd say, what a dumb way of doing things. It really is. But, we work with the state library, they set the rules, they set the programs. Shelley knows the programs. She was able to sit down and, and get with it. I mean, she was off to the races right off the bat. So, we really appreciate what you did. She and her family live in Sunset. When you have a chance to meet her at the library, by all means, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for everything. Okay, discussion item eight.
Mayor, could I say something up there?
Would the council be agreeable with public comment? Please come forward and state your name.
I won't take up much of your time, but I think, I just want to add that, and so often, as a council, I'm sure you hear about the negative things in the, in the community. The library is one of the shining stars of our community. And we have our librarian, is excellent, a strong board, and it's a very important part of the community. And I, as a frequent user, I just am very grateful that we've got the facility that we do. So, thank you for your support of the library.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, action item 8B, street discussion. So we've got some folks here and some new faces that are at the meeting today. And this was actually an agenda item that I requested be put on the agenda. I want to provide you a little bit of backdrop. As folks may have heard, we have been involved in a street assessment for all of the streets and roads in the town of Hill City. I know that there's people that are anxious to get paving done. I know that there's people that are anxious to get improvements on their road. I know that there's people that are anxious, and luckily, we were able to agree on something tonight to get their roads fixed and resurfaced when there have problems and issues. And unfortunately, some of those have taken a long time. So as the council comes together and we start to take a look at how we handle work within Hill City, we are growing, and we need to make sure that we do things in such a way that it enables us and allows us to grow in a way that's most beneficial for all those involved. So as the survey was being completed, and information was coming in, I had started having discussions with staff on streets in Hill City that are in Hill City, but the city doesn't maintain, and there are a few roads that qualify for that. One of them is being addressed as part of a bigger issue, so it doesn't appear on this list. However, there's two others that are not in that same subdivision that I've asked to put on the agenda to start opening conversations. I understand in the past that there have been conversations on these, and they've been had, and then nothing's been done, and then they just resurface and it becomes cyclical. I would rather that the council understand what we face with these roads and what's out there, and we can actually get these things prioritized and take a look at them and see why are things the way they are, and what do we need to do to fix it, so we can do what's right for the community, the community as a whole. So, I put these as separate items because they're two separate issues with each one of these roads. And tonight, I would like to focus on Betty Matkins Avenue. So, the council is aware, I sent a mailer out to the folks that live on Betty Matkins Avenue to invite them here to talk to us about their street and let us know a little bit about it and what's going on with Betty Matkins Avenue. I'd like Brett to take us through basic core information on Betty Matkins Avenue, and then invite the folks to come up here and talk to the council to provide their input to you. Okay, we're not going to resolve anything at this point, it's just to bring in awareness. The resolution is going to come when we start talking about the street plan, when we start building it and we start prioritizing the work. But I think there needs to be a general awareness of the situation that we have here in the city. The second one is Robinson Drive, which is a very different situation than Betty Matkins Court is. So Brett will go ahead and give us a little bit of information on that, but we will do some additional digging. So with that being said, Brett, could you please educate us on Betty Matkins Avenue? Where is it? What is it? And what are we talking about?
I'm going to shut the legs off on everybody again here, just a little bit easier to see the TV screen. So, I don't have, I don't have all of the specific dates and, and reasons as to what I know exists out in the real world today. But I think I'm just going to convey kind of the overall challenges that are facing...
And what we have.
Us as a community with this area. So, on the agenda tonight, the principal discussion is the road topic, Betty Matkins Avenue. If you look at some maps here at City Hall, it will be listed as an accepted avenue. And that's kind of the, the gist of why that road is in the state that it is right now. If you're not familiar with Rapid, Rapid Mount, this is a designated right-of-way that was engineered and drawn of where that street goes right now. What's wrong with this is that it may be designated as future right-of-way, but it was never accepted by the city formally, meaning that the city council at the time never formally accepted or adopted that as a city street. So the first thing that would need to happen in order to tackle this problem, if that's the direction that we're going, would be that it would have to be formally recognized as city-owned right-of-way and street infrastructure. Because right now, you've got a mess. You've got water running down the middle of the road, which is just eroding the road away. The ditches aren't defined, it's a, it could be a decent gravel road. The ditches have to be defined, they're not right now. The water runs down the middle of the road. Whenever we have a gully washer, we also get sediment and gravel runoff from driveways that are attached to the road, and we get the big pile down here in the highway that city staff has been cleaning up after those big storm events hit. So, because it's, it becomes a safety issue for people that are driving at higher rates of speeds on the asphalt surface over here. So, the first challenge is recognizing that this isn't owned by the city, even though it has been planted as a right-of-way. And so, that gets into some legal questions of what we need to do to rectify that. After that, we need to come up with what is the road plan. Naturally, it's a gravel road today. I think that would be the next step in order to address it, that it would remain a gravel road, at least for the time being, but it would be a functional gravel road. I will comment on a couple other things, and you alluded to it earlier, and I'm glad you did. Beyond the road, there are a couple of other issues associated to this area that would need to get untangled as well. This area through here, which services three or four or five homes, this is essentially just an access easement. This is actually privately held, the city, this hasn't been planted as right-of-way. It has not been accepted by the city at all. This is all owned by private individuals, that their lot lines abut one another. And so they've granted each other an easement to get access to and from. So that would have to be addressed along with the road right-of-way as well in order to come up with, I like to talk to, to our Public Works Director about the complete solution problems. We would need to create some kind of a cul-de-sac or something, designate the right-of-way, and, and prepare it as an official city-operated and maintained road. And there are some challenges with elevations and whatnot, but that's why we have a city engineer to help us figure those things out. Beyond that road issue, we also have water and sewer lines issues associated to it. The comment earlier was that there's a fire hydrant, I forget exactly where it is. I think it might be right up here. There's a fire hydrant that has not been functional for quite some time. And, and I don't know factually what's wrong with it, but I have, over the years, been informed that there's an undersized water pipe that comes across this front area and ties into here, that it's an undersized water city main that was allowed to be constructed way back in the day. And I apologize, I don't know what the dates were associated to that. So there's a water line issue that is directly associated to what issues happened with that. There is also, and we talked about it with the council, was that a year ago, two years ago? There's a sewer line that runs up through in here and comes back this way to service everybody's sewer in this area with service lines coming in. We had a cable company came through and trenched through that line at one point in time, and it caused this household some problems with backing up. But the sewer line, when we investigated, we found out that it's not a true city main. The pipe is undersized, and it doesn't have manholes when it changes directions for the pipes underground. And so it doesn't conform to our city standards. Again, I don't know what date that that was put in the ground, but it doesn't conform. We brought a, a project request to the city council in previous agendas and did not obtain the funding in order to correct that question. I know that that project, we've got a little bit more research and whatnot. I know that that project, we've got a little bit more research and whatnot of what needs to be done, because really, that needs to be addressed first before you start building roads and along with water lines. That sewer line fix in and of itself is probably, at this point, probably ninety to a hundred thousand dollars to get that taken care of. The good news on that one is that there is a sewer line easement in place, and we have the rights to do the improvements without obtaining other approvals on it. So, the complete solution to me is to make sure that the sewer line is functional, the water lines, the hydrants work, and then definitely the road surface needs to be addressed. The question is how, you know, from a standpoint of making drawings and proceeding with engineering is, is the easy question. The hard question is, how do you now, as a city, take on responsibility for something that we haven't in the past and do that legal path? And you, as council, are you willing to go down that path to accept that responsibility? I mean, these houses have been in place for a few decades now, and it's one of those lingering questions that I think needs to get some finality to it. This isn't the first time this question has come up since I've been here. It's probably about the fifth time it's come up. And so, it's really up to the council to determine the path going forward.
Okay, I'd like to now open it to the public for some comment. I'd ask that you please try to keep yourself within three minutes. This is your opportunity to go ahead and address the council relative to what Brett just outlined.
Sure. I am James Evans. I am a resident at six, three, six. Actually, it's Betty's Court, which is the little road right off of Betty Matkins Avenue. I would like to address that Betty Matkins Court, I can understand that's, there's not much we can do or want to do with that right now. But that Betty Matkins Avenue, in order for me to get to my driveway, I need to use that. And it's really quite ridiculous that I need a four-wheel-drive vehicle in order, during the summer, in order to get to my driveway. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm not asking for asphalt, curb and gutter, street lamps. If I want that, I'll move to Rapid City. Okay? Alls I want is access to my house, is what I want. That's, that's what we need. That house was built in eighty-two, the house beside it was built in seventy-nine. So, that's forty years it's been that way. That's, I don't understand why. Am I part of the community? I work in the community, I spend my money in the community. I also do volunteer work, meals on wheels for the community. Am I not a member? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anyone else?
My name's Laramie Harvey. I live six fifty-two Betty's, Betty's Court. I hate making too much of a comment because I need to educate myself more on the taxes and where they're going, but if, if we're in the city limits and our taxes are being broke down and allocated the same as somebody who's on the road that is being serviced and maintained by the city, is that fair? And same for what's going to, to fire. I mean, if that, I know from a pretty good source, like Mr. Matkins said, that it's because the, the pipe's not big enough on the fire hydrant right across from the house. Why, what's the purpose? And if we're paying taxes on that, what's the purpose of that? So, that's all I got. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Jo Anderson, five ninety Betty Court. I second that. Seventy-nine is when the house was built, they've been paying taxes on it the whole time. What are the taxes going for it?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Peggy Douglas, I live through ten Betty Matkins Avenue. I live up to the top of the hill, and the fire hydrant is right before our house. And I understand it doesn't really work, and I'm concerned about if there is a fire, because we are surrounded by trees and it's very dry. And it's, we don't have four-wheel drive, and it's very dangerous. And we, we just moved here from the south, and we're not used to driving in the snow. And it's just dangerous. And, and I know I've been up here several times and called, and, you know, but I hope we can get it fixed, because it is dangerous. It's very dangerous if we don't have water up there for a fire. And anybody could go in those ditches on either side of the road. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda. I'm Jim's wife. And I deliver meals on wheels, usually four to five times a day, or five times a day, sorry, a week. And my car bottoms out. Now, I don't have a little bitty, bitty car, but I don't have a huge truck either. It's kind of got to the point where it's ridiculous when I can't even deliver a meal to a senior for anything safely. I would really love to see us just be able to use our road, really. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Well, first, I'd like to, before I turn it over to the council and the request that I have of council, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I think it's important that we understand that we need to work together as a community as we start to take a look at what we need to get done. Everyone knows that we have a limited amount of funds, and with those funds, we have to determine what the best thing is. But we also need to take into consideration the livelihood and the safety of our residents. There's a few things here that I've heard today that are concerning, over above the fact that I know that the city doesn't plow that road. Quite honestly, I think it has to be very difficult for those people to utilize it. This is a situation where it has been set as a right-of-way, and honestly, I think we need to look at it seriously to do something instead of just punting it a few more years and punting it a few more years and punting it a few more years. So, with that being said, I am gonna open it up to the council for discussions, but my ask of the council tonight, number one, was to provide some education relative to this, and then another street that we're gonna talk about. But also, look for consensus or direction from the council as to additional work that we would need to do to look at what it's gonna, what we're gonna need in order to make this right. What do we need to do? What are some of the recommendations that we can put on the table? So, that was my thought process and reason for, for asking that this be added to the agenda for inviting folks that live on that street. So, you heard from them what they're facing, what's happening. They pay taxes like everyone else does. So, I'd like to open it up to the council for discussion, if you have any questions, and look to see what your thoughts are on the council making a decision to move forward with additional research that we need to do.
I got a question. So, Brett, from the paved surface, how far up is the main road gonna go before it would tie into private?
So, there is, if I can move this around a little bit. So, there's a, right about here, right above it, I know you can't really read this. This is S thirty.
Yeah.
There is a designated line in there that, let me see if I can measure it. That goes down to the right-of-way, and I'm just gonna measure it to the street. So, where that line is, is now the access point to that bigger parcel that's back behind that house, that last house. So, you're looking at, according to Rapid Map, it's three hundred and eighty-two feet. And so, that, that little area right here is just the access point to this bigger lot. So, if you were going to accept this as city right-of-way, you would probably take it all the way back here, just because you've already got a house at the end that is connected to it and benefiting from that.
As I was just kinda thinking here, as far as plowing snow, I mean, I definitely agree we're gonna need a cul-de-sac, and probably something on both ends, you know, pile snow and turn vehicles around. It'd be something at least I'm thinking about.
Yeah. One of the challenges, and we've had a few of these where it just dead-ends because of how it was planted by the developer and essentially, I don't know what process it went through for approvals back in the day. But you're right, it creates a problem for us of, okay, well, how do we plow? Do we need to back up the hill and then put a shed out to the street? And then, you know, chase it somewhere else so we can pile it up? It makes it hard to turn around, anybody to turn around, because it's really not, it's not a finished road. There's not a designated way to turn around or an accommodation provided for somebody to turn around at the end there. But I think the intent was, we're gonna create this right-of-way, and we're gonna plat a couple of properties as we go along and sell them and build a spec house or whatever, and eventually, that road would be completed at a future date. Well, that's why we're, where we're at now is that you've got an unfinished development, in my opinion, that you don't have that cul-de-sac. You don't have that turnaround that's required by, you know, fire suppression ordinance that says, hey, every so many feet, we've gotta have a turnaround for trucks.
And that's kind of where I keep running into a lot of issues, where we have the roads that aren't basically deeded over to municipality as a fact that it's, it's a private development that's not finished, then everything hasn't been deeded over. As far as, I'm assuming, do you know, do the water mains for that, does that go up the middle of the street, or is that kind of cut through private property?
If I remember correctly, that water main runs parallel to the highway, and then it runs up the street, but I'm not sure on which side, if it's right in the middle of the road or off to the side in the ditch. I, I don't remember. I have to do some research on that. But I know that sewer line runs, there's an easement that comes up through in this direction, as I pointed out earlier. That one I do know, but I know this, the water line isn't there.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I think it's darned time to get something done.
Mayor?
Alderman Minor? You have the floor.
How much would it cost to have the, an estimate of the work that would need to fix the sewer, the water, and make a acceptable gravel street out of this? How much would it, how much work or cost would it be to get that information and present it to council?
So, I'm gonna ask Brett to help us with that.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as I referred to earlier, we already have a cost estimate that's probably at least a year and a half to two years old on the sewer line repair, or replacements, not really repair. And so, we're talking about putting in a, a city main, sewer main, and manholes appropriately. That's all been mapped out. A few years ago, that cost was about eighty-eight thousand dollars. I would expect that to have gone up a little bit. So, you're looking between ninety and a hundred, just for the sewer line. We actually have some, some, between the city engineer, our public works director, and we've got another gentleman working for us right now, we could probably put together pretty quickly and easily a road repair or rehab price estimate for you without too much trouble. What would take longer, and we could have that relatively, done relatively quickly as well without much cost. The water part, we're gonna have to research that one a little bit more. It would be a little bit more involved. I don't know that I could produce that document as quickly as I could the other two. But I, I would say, all of that, of what you just described is very doable. It's just, it's the direction of the council.
And it would be
to move forward with those questions.
employee labor and costs, and not us actually having to have our engineer help us at this point, unless we get to a point where we...
Well, what we could do with our city engineer is, he has known costs per linear foot of installing water lines.
Okay.
And if we know what that linear foot number is, and that it needs to get replaced, we can throw together a pretty quick, rough estimate. Again, we would probably need to have engineered plans, because if it's undersized, I don't think it probably went through this date before, but it probably would now that it would have a regular city main.
Okay. So, so, in, I guess, answer to your question, Alderman Minor, it would, from a cost perspective, I'm hearing not very expensive. A lot of, it would be staff effort and prioritization, prioritization of the work that we have. But just by virtue of your question, I'm gleaning that as you have interest in understanding what we can do to fix this, in essence. I've heard, I've heard a second of that from Alderman Householder as well. I look for comments from the other two council, and in fact, if this is something that the council would stand behind us looking into, then we can put it on our list of priorities and projects we need to address.
I think we should get the, get some cost estimate to fix the, or take care of the road, and then gravel it, knowing that we're gonna have to go back in, but into both the sewer and the other. The only thing I could, I remember from years past is the sewer. I don't remember anything about the road or the water line specifically.
Yeah.
But regardless, if we fix that road, and it's not too costly to, to grade it and get something done to it, we can go back and bring these other steps into it and figure out how to do that.
Okay.
I know, my feeling is, I think that before we do any work on the road, I think we should have the road deeded to the city and take, take ownership of that road.
Okay.
So, we're not trying to start working on something that's not owned by the city, and other people kind of, well, you worked on their road, why don't you work on ours? So, I think we need to look at that.
So, we can work with our city attorney in order to understand what's gonna be necessary in order to do that. If that is the direction that the council would like us to move in, we will move forward with that. I'm hearing consensus, I'm seeing shaking heads here. And Alderman Minor, I'm taking, I'm taking your questions and direction relative to estimation as also consensus, so I believe we will go ahead and put that on our docket and our priorities to move forward. We'll research the ownership of it and how that works, and then we'll also research costs and what we can do and how that's gonna work for that street. Okay? All right, any other questions?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Minor. Any other questions? Okay. I'll go ahead then and close out the discussion on this again. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I appreciate the situation that you're in. I know how difficult it is when we have a storm and it runs down our driveway and creates big ruts, and I've seen this road. I've driven this road, and I'm grateful to the council for giving us the ability to go ahead and look, and move this forward. So, we will keep everybody advised as we make progress on it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, along the same vein, Robinson Drive. So, I'm gonna ask Brett to give us a little bit of information, as this one is a bit of a different situation, as there's no right-of-way that's involved with this.
Let me pull it up on the screen here for everybody. So, Robinson Drive is the road that is directly behind City Hall that goes up and services, actually, it services about four properties, but there's only, four or five properties, but there's only four homes up there right now. And so, there is, as the mayor spoke, there is no designated right-of-way that then has been created or planted or engineered. What you see here is just a line that, that defines where Robinson Drive is. But the reality is, is that the city of Hill City owns City Hall in this parcel. And so, we actually have an easement that goes through the south end of our property so that the owners of this area can access their property. Once they get through the city property, again, the property owners' property are adjacent with one another. There is not a designated, nor engineered, nor adopted or accepted right-of-way. Okay? So, this is a private, as the way it currently stands, this is a private street. Private. There is an easement that allows everybody to get access to it. There is not a active homeowners association here. I think there's some people that have tried to create that and some resistance from other members who own property up here, so that, that has not evolved. The city, because our, our extent of our property ends right here, and you'll see kind of a fence post at the end of the guardrail up here, if you ever look at it, or you wanna walk up there with me sometime. There's a, there's a fence post right next to, at the end of the guardrail that designates where our property ends. And so, we will maintain and plow this stretch right through here to make sure that that is functioning properly. The challenge is, is those, whenever a gravel road fails, it usually fails up here. And then, the problem creates, reflected and created down below. If you don't fix all of it, the water's going in the wrong spot to begin with. And then, when it hits here, it's just gonna eat up that road. So, we do try to maintain this little area stretch right here. So, um, we do try to maintain this little area stretch right here. Um, there has been quite a few different private efforts to address this with shaping and drainage and whatnot. The challenge is, is that, uh, this road is really steep and it, it does not meet our, uh, specs, uh, for road construction within our planning and zoning book. It's too steep and so that's one of the reasons why it was never accepted. Uh, one is, it's too steep. Secondly, they never planted it as a right of way even to get it to that point. Um, so there's quite a bit going on right there. I don't think you will ever get conformance of how steep that road is, um, given the, the situation and how the road or how the houses have been constructed in here at their elevations. There is water and sewer that comes up through here. Um, the sewer, we have not had any issues with, that I'm aware of. Uh, it is connected to our city main, but we do not accept it as far as maintenance, if there's anything that goes wrong with it. Um, we were advised by Attorney Bettman several years ago, probably at least five, not to work on it. Uh, we're not charging tapping fees for that area, people tap in, uh, because we don't want to be associated to it as taking ownership of it at, in any respect, but we've allowed people to connect to it because it does exist. Um, so, no known sewer line issues, there are water line issues though. Um, the issue with the water line is that it is either buried too shallow or in a location where it needed, um, somewhere insulation cover or something. So there is a, a certain stretch probably up, um, in this area, I would say, um, that freezes pretty consistently in the spring. And so you've got for sure this house that goes without water unless they've made other accommodations, uh, and sometimes this house is without water as well. Um, and that's just due to the freezing of the line and then once, um, the spring thaw comes, but usually for up here, cause it's kind of in the shadow, that usually doesn't come for them until probably May, um, sometime. So there are infrastructure issues beyond the road there. Again, this one is different from the one we spoke about previously in that there is no designated right of way. It is all private easement and there's not a home, active homeowners association, it is inland home. And we don't, we don't maintain, we don't maintain any of this. No water maintenance, no sewer maintenance, no road maintenance.
Okay. So my purpose for putting this on the agenda, is there any public that would like to speak to this? I don't think there's anybody from Robinson here. Okay. So my purpose for putting this road on the agenda is, yes, again, it is another one that is geographically located within our city limits, but yet it's a different situation. So, if we, if we start to take a look at street plan, this is something that I wanted to make sure that council was aware of, you understood how all of this is and it's likely that you will have conversations with constituents that live up there that have these issues and I do feel for them, but this is a very different situation than the last one we spoke of. Okay?
The development, infrastructure needs to be at least close before you can-
Yeah.
...begin and do a whole lot sometimes.
Yeah. So, we've got this situation as well that we will need to look at, what do we do with at some point? But again, we've, we've kind of taken these and punted them down the road a bit and I think it's really important that we start looking at those things instead of continuing it, we actually do something to resolve these. So there'll probably be more with regard to that as we move along, but again, it's a very different situation, but it is a road within our community. Okay? All right. There's no other conversation. Um, I need to make an adjustment to the agenda. I apologize I didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting, but, um, in our discussion items, I'd like to go ahead and recognize the Boys and Girls Club. You guys wanna come on up? You've been patiently waiting, so.
Hi, I'm Lisa Segalyn, CEO of Boys and Girls Club. Um, you all met Ronnie last week. Um, thank you again for last week for giving us the opportunity to share with you what we're doing. My apologies, I was double booked. I believe Ronnie told you I had a board meeting in Hot Springs at the time. Um, so we had discussion, I had to be out there. Um, we just wanted to, I know Ronnie gave you a lot of highlights of what we've been doing with the shutdown and how we've been operating this summer. Um, it's going very well. The best thing is, is the kids are saying that they're happy to be back, mostly to see their friends. We're kinda taking it that they miss us too, but, you know. But one thing that we are doing that we would like everybody's help with to maybe, um, get the word out is, the last two years, we've been doing a program called Road Code and it's not driver's ed, however, it does teach safe driving and they do get the chance to, um, drive simulators and in different situations. So the simulator is actually driving on a busy street, um, driving if you're tired, driving if you've been slightly intoxicated, they give them the different scenarios of how it works. Um, the program-
Construction.
Yeah, construction. We all need that. Um, we have had this open the last two years to anybody. You don't need to be a member, it's, it's geared towards kids ages thirteen to fourteen, I mean, thirteen to eighteen. Um, we have a, we, a partnership with UPS, so we actually have two, one a retired UPS driver and another, um, he's actually the general manager of the Rapid City Sturgis area that comes and, and they teach the class or teach the class with staff to the kids. Um, they give a lot of their scenarios. Um, if you're familiar, UPS has very high, um, safety standards. If drivers get in one accident, they actually are terminated. Um, so, they give a good perspective to kids and it's not coming from us or their parents. But we've actually had kids that have taken the class two or three times just because it's fun. It's very hands-on, it's very interactive, but we have to have so many kids go through the program in a year and, of course, this year, um, we've kinda are out pretty much the first half of the year because we were gonna get started after school started up again. But if you know of anybody that has kids in that age group, um, send them towards us. It is, it's fun, it's interactive, we know how to get the kids there, we bribe them with pizza and, and good stuff, so, once they finish it, they graduate, we do a graduation party, um, but it's-
A shirt.
Yes, they get a shirt, um, that says they went through it, um, all of that. Um, we do, we do the program in all three of our locations and we're also working with Scott from UPS to do something in the Rapid City area, possibly through the Club for Boys, and also in the Somerset area, um, where there's a lot of teen drivers. So, yeah, so- It's a four-hour program and we just run it, um, all straight through during one evening or one weekend day, so it's not like the kids have to keep coming back and keep coming back. It'll just be one shot. Um, but yes, we really, really need kids to, um, come in and do it, they don't have to be members. Um, it's, uh, we-
No cost.
No cost at all, um, and we'll feed them, no cost at all. Um, we do use, we do hit a hun, we need a hundred a year and they aren't budging from that as of this year. So, um, in the past, we've done it very well in Hill City, I would say seventy-five percent of what the, um, whole entire grant has consisted of kids from Hill City coming. Um, so we just need a little push, a little help to get those numbers, um, this year and so, uh, it's a really fun program. I helped side-by-side teach it several times and every single time, I'm like, oh my God, I never noticed that. Oh, that's so smart, why don't I have been doing that for years? So it does, it does raise awareness on, um, especially for kids that are just starting to drive, simple things like, um, a green light, it's a stale green light, if you didn't see it turn green, so you don't exactly know how long it's been green. Be aware of that. And that was the first thing that I noticed when I took the program was like, wow, I just run it, so, um, maybe I should be more aware of things that happen, so.
Exactly.
Anyway, um, we do a lot of other grants, like I just said last, um, last week and we still have our regular kid programming. Um, our push this, um, once we start the school year, is that we are low right now in the summertime of our teen attendance and so in order to really get that up, we just need the, um, cause the teens that are already at the club right now have all taken it more than once, so, um, we just need to get some of the kids in for it, so. Would appreciate your help. Any questions?
Do you have a date?
Oh, we'll start when school starts.
When school starts.
Mm-hmm. And we will be open, you know, for after-school programs as soon as school starts as well.
Maybe when you get a date, we can get our mayor to issue a proclamation for that day for Safe Teen Driving Day.
Oh, we would love that, that would be awesome. Yeah.
You're giving me work, though.
Yeah. We'll give you pizza too. Uh, the other thing is different this year is because we were shut down for that two months about, um, we normally close a week, um, before school starts and we are not closing this year, so we will be open because we have a lot of our cleaning and organizing done during that time, so.
Okay.
So it'll be Monday and Tuesday, regular summer programming, Wednesday, school starts after-school programming.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies. Okay, that'll conclude our discussion items. Um, I thank everybody for your perseverance and hanging in with us. I know it's been, um, quite a long meeting, however, let's go ahead and go through the report items. I promise I'll be as brief as I can. Let's start with the council and Alderman Minor. I'll start with you, anything that you'd like to report out on?
So I have two items for tonight.
Okay.
Um, the first one, I would like to, uh, recognize Alderman Doty. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe he's been, uh, out of state for three weeks on a, on a fire and so I think we should, um, recognize his service.
Absolutely.
And the second item I have is, uh, due to personal family reasons, I will be resigning from council effective August twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I want to, uh, thank the residents of Ward Two and Hill City, um, and business owners, all the people that have helped me and, um, and I especially wanna thank my wife without her patience and, or, for her patience and support this past thirteen months, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to Alderman Householder.
Although I'm not officially lay us on to the library board, but I did attend their last meeting, um, very informative, uh, this is a very high-functioning group, uh, as you saw, the library is a vital service to this community and I think they have a very good board and they put together a pretty good budget proposal that we'll be reviewing, I think, next week, so.
Thursday.
This Thursday, okay. I'm anxious to do that because I think they're, they're doing a good job, so.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Doty.
I got nothing.
Okay. Alderman Gillespie.
Just wanna make sure, did you guys get that, uh, code of conduct document?
Yes.
That email out and go through?
Yes. So we can add it as an action item for the next meeting or would you prefer it be a discussion item at that point?
I, it matters not to me. I've been through it quite a bit, um, so-
I think, like Carl and I could use a, one go-through discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, add it as a discussion item then. Okay. Thank you. Okay. I got a few things, but I'll try to be as quick as possible. So I did attend the P and Z meeting, um, and, um, the council has set some, um, hearing dates for the things that were discussed. The one thing I wanna make sure I share with everyone else is they are currently working on a transient vendor, um, changes and some ordinances, so the council will be seeing that. I'd ask that the council please feel free to reach out to the Planning and Zoning Commission if you have any questions or, or develop an additional understanding of what's happening, what their direction is, things like that. Um, that would be an opportunity to do so as they're in the process with that. Speed control devices. So we had a request from one of our planning and zoning commissioners that something be done on Railroad Avenue, the cars seemed like they were speeding through quite a bit and, um, I believe it was Dani who's gone right now, but, um, she arranged to have the DOT put one of those boxes out there that tells you how fast you're going and the speeds and it appeared to be quite effective. I heard a lot of feedback from residents that the cars, they could see them slowing down, you could see the brake lights, it wasn't as, it, it wasn't as it had been before. So I just so happened to get in the mail, information from one vendor relative to speed control signs, so si- similar to the ones that they have in Custer, or the one that they have in Custer, when you come downhill or even the control sign that they have over by, um, Reptile Gardens, when you come down the hill, it says, this is your speed, you're speeding. Um, so what I did is, I haven't done any research into this, but I reached out to Rich Zucker to find out if this is something that the state would provide since they're both state highways. He had indicated that he'd do some follow-up, but typically he's, while there may be some assistance, he's actually seen some other communities that have gone and done this themselves and purchased it themselves and done that. So I'm gonna do a little bit of research relative to costs on this and different companies that may have this to offer, but I wanted to bring this to the attention of the council because I would be looking for the council's approval and sponsorship of us potentially doing something like this on Main Street on either end and then, I'm not sure about the school and all that, but at minimum, to do it on either end of Main Street, if you folks have seen, there's a lot of people and cars kinda zoom around that corner and we have a real issue. So it is, it has been proven to be effective in other situations for speed reduction. This isn't the ultimate solution. Um, I know that a lot of people have expressed interest in additional traffic controls, but that's a much longer battle that we'll have to have with the depart, Department of Transportation. This may actually be beneficial and help us, so I just wanted to make you guys aware that this has come and-
I would really think there'd be some grant money.
And that's what-
It might be.
Yep.
We have some people in the community that are really top-notch at that, that, uh, but, you know, save some of the DOT or national programs for grants for this kinda stuff.
Might be able to help us out.
Help us, yeah.
Yep. So I think it would be a good thing, as it did prove effective on Railroad Avenue. Um, I had reached out to all of the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission with regard to switching, um, our, the meetings that we have, so right now in our ordinance, it's written that we have our council meetings on the, uh, second and fourth and we have our P and Z meetings on the first and third. Um, most of the rest of the communities in the state do it the opposite way. We've also talked about that, a switch in that would allow us the ability to be able to attend, um, school board meetings and things like that that happen to be there. So the council was interested in the switch and the committee was as well. We talked about timeframes and thought the best time to do it would be a week, um, a month that we had five Mondays, cause usually there's an off Monday, so we could just pick up a new schedule. We do have an opportunity at the end of August and we also have an opportunity at the end of November. Um, in working with the staff, August is ramping up to be quite a busy month when it comes to, um, building permits and other things that we wouldn't want to have to wait that extra week. So we may be looking at doing this switch in November, so it would take effect at the December meeting. Um, and we also have to research changes that need to be made, so we're gonna need to make changes to our ordinance, we're gonna need to make changes to the planning and zoning information, so there's a little bit more than just kinda flipping the meetings, so we're gonna continue to research that, but I don't think it's something we'll be able to get accomplished in able, in order to be able to do that switch in August. So, more to come on that, just so you all know. Um, additional parking, so, um, our city employees that wear many hats ensured that the tennis courts over between the Boys and Girls Club and the senior center are now lined for parking. We'll be working on getting some parking signs that we can put up there and I'm also gonna partner with Janet at the chamber to put together some maps that she can pass out at the chamber and put on Facebook and whatever, that will have parking areas within Hill City, so those can go to the visitors. In case any of you haven't noticed, and I'm not sure where you've been, if you haven't, we're pretty crowded now. Um, and our parking that we have is being taken up. I've seen the businesses have issues with the parking that they need to use for their employees and some of our visitors parking there, so anything we can do to increase that is a plus for our community, so this is one way that we can do that. I also wanna work with Janet to put together a rally-specific one because we will have Main Street closed off, so there'll be some areas that'll be specific to motorcycle parking. I just learned today that the Harley, um, that the eighteen-eighty train is going to provide space for folks to have motorcycle parking only there as well. They're not gonna have the, the drive-and-try kinda thing that they had, so they'll provide that for parking, which will be a blessing because that'll actually be on pavement and they won't have to go through stones. So we're still working on that additional parking spot. Um, the liaison role, as you had mentioned, I'm gonna be doing some work on that, we'll actually have that as a discussion point in one of our upcoming meetings to understand how we wanna utilize that role and how we can do it a little bit more effectively. Um, I had some questions come up this week relative to packet distribution to the general public. So, um, right now, and, and, and as per state statute, we're required to provide public the ability to obtain a copy of a packet, um, either when the packet is sent out to the rest of the meeting attendees or twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, whichever is later is the way that the statute reads. Um, we, the, the staff here has made some adjustments and once the packets are emailed to our council and to our planning and zoning- And once the packets are emailed to our council and to our Planning and Zoning Commission, they will be made available at that point to the public, which is usually Friday afternoon. So although City Hall is closed, they should be available Friday afternoon late. And they can pick them up on Monday because we are closed 24 hours prior. There was a question about emailing it, the situation relative to email is that any of the packets that are sent out to the council are sent to their city at email addresses, which I feel is a little bit more secure. We've had issues in the past where we've received emails and people have denied sending them, so personal email addresses are just a little bit more at risk. The other point about emailing is, I'd love to be able to have the opportunity to do that, but if you open it up to every resident here, we don't have the technical expertise and capability to do it, nor do we have the manpower. So it would be something that we'd like to do, but we simply can't make that offer with the volume that we'd be looking at. The other option that I'd like to do is see if there would be some way we could have it put up on our city Facebook page. However, the ability to be able to do that, again, is governed by the fact that we don't have the skill set here in order to be able, able to handle that technical information. So we will be discussing that with council at a later date relative to how we can do that because I, I would like to have that up there and anybody could pull it off whenever it's available. But again, we need a specific skill set in order to be able to do that. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was, in September, I will be setting up a general town hall meeting for all of the residents and community members in Hill City. We've come to a point now where we can see that we're starting to get additional traffic, we're starting to grow as a community. And I look at things like the comprehensive plan that talks about where we go as a future and still maintaining our identity that we have as Hill City. So to prevent us from becoming another town that has been, that has ultimately become something that it didn't intend to be, we can identify what our direction is, and then all of the work that we do matches that direction. So those are some of the conversations that I wanted to start having with the community so everybody understands what direction, and we make that decision, where are we going? How are we thoughtfully moving forward to maintain who we are? So more information to come on that set, that's all I have, I'm going to bump it over to.
I forgot to mention that the eight years I've been with the Senior Center, anytime we had to get water, we had to go inside the building because there's not a spigot on the outside. And after eight years, Travis got the hydrant working on the outside. Congratulations, thank you.
Yay Travis.
No problem.
Okay, so I'm going to bump it over to Brett for a quick, oh nope, Stacia first, for a few quick updates, and then Brett.
Um, I just, I got an email about a week ago or so. It's dating with the 2020 SDML conference that was in October, it has been canceled due to just so many key people are in leadership roles and they're vital to their own communities that all of us getting together in Spearfish was not a good thing due to COVID-19. But the regular business meetings that are for finance and the city administrators in those will be held virtually.
So. Thank you. Brett?
I will be very brief, but I am going to add one item in here. And I'm going to need Travis's help on a couple of them maybe. Water reservoir project, I just had a conversation with Kale again today. We touch base at least once a week on the water project. We are working on the water reservoir project. Kale has actually done some, and continues to do some outreach to the company that will actually construct the tank. And then he's also working with some of the structural engineers on the foundation and just making sure that this tank that we're proposing to put up on the side of this hill stays where it should be. And so I know Kale has made some adjustments to the tank location. He is not quite finished with that discussion with the, with the tank structural engineers, nor the installers, because they have certain needs that need to be met in order for them to put the tank up at that location. So there's two, there's two major things that we need to get right here, one, that it stays where we put it. Secondly, if it is extremely complicated to install, we're going to see at the bid letting, they're going to adjust their price, and that price is going to go up quite a bit. So we're trying to get an idea of the reality of that tank location with the actual construction. So we're trying to kind of merge the two together. So I'm hoping that within the next two weeks to four weeks, we should be able to communicate a much clearer message as to the tank project and exactly where we're at. But rest assured, it's being worked on and for very good reason, so.
Hopefully two weeks, so.
Yeah, hopefully in two weeks, that's what we're going to shoot for.
Okay.
Then we'll have a, a much better, more clear update for you. Major Lake Bridge project, I talk to DOT on a regular basis about once a week. And to my understanding, the archaeological review has been completed. There were no people that were opposed to the project. And so the Forest Service is, has, I believe they have signed the temporary construction easement paperwork that we need in order to move forward with our project. And there are some restrictions that were placed on them, but they're all reasonable. They don't want us to affect the dam, you know, the toe of the slope there, and storing materials around the job site. And if we do happen to run across any archaeological artifacts of significance, we will stop work and notify the appropriate agency if that were to occur, so that they can investigate. So once that goes from, the Forest Service has got to go back to the South Dakota Department of Transportation to get in the queue for their next process in the bid letting process because all the engineering is done, we're just waiting for the final ribbon to be tied on that package, so. The Bull Run subdivision, I'm going to ask Travis to help me out with the update. If you could come up Travis, that would be great. Travis, actually Kale came up early, our city engineer came up early today to help troubleshoot a, a problem that we ran into just here in the past 24 hours with some rock and excavation and blasting and whatnot and moving some water lines. And so I appreciate Travis's involvement in that, and I would thank Kale, but he's already left, for helping to troubleshoot that and come up with an action operational plan. But if you can just tell him, besides the moving of the water line, a little bit, just a little bit about the project.
Yeah, so everything's been going pretty good, and I've actually caught up a little bit. Found out today, just about 10 feet west of the manhole, that's like Quinn Drive on top of Hill. There's, they dug down two feet, ran into rock, so they're going to be, which they planned for blasting, but there's going to be a lot of blasting that's going to be happening coming down top of Hill to install the rest of this. Where the water line where I was talking about, it would have been 12 feet deep in the ground, which is not good for maintaining or any issues with it. So we're going to move 10 feet over, so we'll be under the road coming down top of Hill. But we are going to put in the plans to get a T, put off it on the north side of the intersection of top of Hill where it puts up the shoe booster for future to go off to the north. There's going to be another valve that wasn't on the plan for some reason, they added on the opposite side of that intersection for the fire hydrant, and then they will continue on. Expect to be a lot of blasting that they're a little concerned about, but I think they'll get through it. But other than that, everything's going good. I think they were talking about possibly paving the rest of the Quinn Drive loop. Starting this week, all the curbs are in, so they're already starting to put asphalt up there. So that phase should be done next week or two at most, hopefully. Other than that, till today, it was going really good. But I think we got it resolved, and they're not going to have to wait here and with what Brett said, we got it.
I know in the eastern part of top of Hill, they ran into some rock, and they were using their hammer to get down to the depth they needed for the sewer line. So they're hitting, for you, for you and council now that maybe weren't familiar with it earlier, they did some pre-boring drilling samples of the area to determine how much blasting and solid rock that they would encounter in this project, and from those reports, they didn't find anything. And of course, they didn't test in the red spots because they're hitting it now.
They missed every bad spot.
They missed every bad spot in their, in their pre-assessment. But the cost of all of that is on the developer to make that happen. So it's not that the city is going to have to incur a cost associated to it, and they know that. But they're doing a great job, like Travis said, the paving is going to be starting underway, hopefully later this week or next week. The last item I just want to touch on real quick because it's coming up much faster than anybody realizes, I know I'm shocked it's coming, is the rally. Travis and I, this is going to be Travis's first year with the rally, and we have a fairly light crew right now. We've got some bodies that are in different spots and not here at work. So it's going to be an interesting year because it's a bunch of new things for inundation of, of traffic. And so what Travis and I did is we pulled out the book, which is the official road plan book, and it's a little bit outdated but functional. We went and did a kind of inside inventory of all of our barricades and our signs and whatnot. And so the two things that we've learned is that we needed to order a few things, and we've taken care of that already. Travis, the main thing was to get Travis comfortable with kind of how it's set up, and he could formulate a plan of how to stage it and then put it into action. And so he's working through that in his mind and staff and putting it on the trailer and getting it out. There are some challenges, and I, I know they've been pointed out with some of our barricades. Some of our barricades are not 100% road sign appropriate with, with the current code. We will not be able to make those adjustments this year, but Travis and I have talked about purchasing what we would need to make those adjustments for next year. We've got a lot of old barricades that need to be replaced, they're pretty beat up. We've got some signs that have set, that say, "Main Street Open to Motorcycle Parking Only." Those signs have been used now for probably at least 15 years. And they don't meet, I know for a fact they don't meet the reflectivity standards that are now set in the code. And so there are multiple things that need to be done in order to get that up to where it should be. I'm not looking to replace everything we have in one year because that would be a nightmare for the budget, but we need to make sure that we're getting enough to slowly replace it so that within at least a couple of years, two or three years, we've got brand-new equipment that does meet all the standards and specs. It achieves what we need it to do and that it's as safe as we can for the public, so. Anyway, so we're working on it.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, with that, I'll entertain a motion to move to executive session after a five-minute break.
So moved.
Alderman Householders, there are a second?
Sorry, can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Reset, retire into executive session.